A Harley.
Yes, sir.
He's ridden it in Daddy's motorcycle ride several times.
Ultra limited.
Okay.
Hey, we're ready, Paige. Are you ready?
I'll take a look at that.
We just went live to Facebook, so we are live on all our channels.
Or state fan, you ready?
Okay, you ready?
Yeah, I'm not in charge of this party.
Welcome to City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. First, I'm going to read Governor Lee's Executive Order. Pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16 and subsequent orders, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the January 26, 2021, Gallatin Council Community Meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestream to protect the public's safety and welfare welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Join the Zoom meeting at one four seven oh two five oh ninety three fifty eight or one four seven oh three eight one twenty five fifty two and enter webinar ID eight eight six two eight four seven four eight four eight.
Most approved electronic meeting.
I have number four.
Are we going to do the call to order and roll call at the same time?
Yeah, you get it.
Ms. Kettrell.
All the guys that they did with the little thing on you and that's it. There's no results of any.
Ms. Kettrell on here.
There's Connor, you on there? We can't hear you.
I don't see her.
She's there. I see her. I just can't hear.
Yeah, she's here. No, we can't hear you. Turn your volume up a little bit.
Very faintly, we can hear you.
Do you think she should log out and log back in and choose use computer audio? Because it's like it's not on the right mic.
Matt's going down to check on it.
Thank you.
Mayor, you want to call it a row?
I can do that. Ms. Kettrell, you can listen. I'll be happy to. Actually, you have to vote and affirm your presence. So I will begin with Councilman Alexander.
Present.
And you need to vote on holding the meeting electronically as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Fan?
Yes, and here.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George?
Yes, and here.
Um, Councilman Hayes? Um, Councilwoman Love?
Lee.
Yes, and here.
Hey, Councilman Overton?
Yes, and here.
Hey, we have a quorum and a unanimous vote to hold the meeting electronically. Ms. Fan.
Next is approval of meetings, and there's none provided, so I assume we can move on to public recognition.
Okay, if you'd like to speak, um, and this is on, yeah, this is on agenda and non-agenda related items. If you'd like to speak, use the raise your hand function. That's at the bottom of your screen. You just mouse over. If you're using a desktop or the app. If you're calling by phone, you'll hit star nine to raise your hand. And I'm looking at our attendees. Last call for anybody I'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. Okay, it doesn't look like anyone would like to speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yay, okay. So now we will do the electronic meeting in attendance. So Vice Mayor Fennell?
Um.
We've already done that.
Kettrell, if it's okay with you actually did that in your absence?
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
There was a unanimous affirmative vote to hold the meeting electronically, and everyone is present.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Okay, we'll move on to the mayor's comments.
All right, and this is in honor of Councilman Hayes. I have no comments this evening.
Oh. You're doing a fine job, Mr. Hayes. Fine job.
Okay, then we'll move on to the agenda.
The world is coming to an end.
Number one on the agenda is the 2020 audit with Ms. Rachel Nichols.
Thank you. We have Karen Stevens and Bob Adams from Blankenship CPA Group here with us this evening to present our 2020 audit. Um, they've got a small PowerPoint they want to do and then briefly cover the highlights of the audit report for last year. Short and sweet, we had a good report. I will turn it over to Karen and Bob.
Thank you, Rachel. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, Bob's got the PowerPoint presentation pulled up, and he's going to do the bulk of the talking, but I just wanted to say hello. A few familiar faces out there. Some of you may have remembered that we've been together before. Uh, it's been several years, and we're so excited to be back with you as your auditors for the city. This is Blankenship's first year serving you guys. Uh, and so, you know, this was a new set of auditors for Rachel and her team, and we just appreciate all that she went through in breaking in a new audit firm. So, uh, as she said, this is very short and sweet tonight. We've condensed 120-page report into about six slides. So, uh, feel free to ask any questions you might have here. Uh, and also, uh, you can reach us at any, uh, any time Rachel knows how to get in touch with us if you have a, if you have a specific question. Um, but as it says here on the screen, my name's Karen Stevens. I'm one of the partners with the firm in charge of the, of the audit for the city. And then Bob Adams, uh, is really the person who, um, is responsible for getting all the work done. He's one of our senior managers with the firm and, and one of our governmental experts. So, Bob, with that, I'm gonna, um, just toss it over to you and let you, uh, take over the slides.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you to all the managers, um, and council members for entrusting us to be your auditors this year. Um, I know we're, as Karen said, we are really excited to, um, to be your auditors and, um, hope, you know, really want to provide a lot of value, uh, to, to, to the City of Gallatin. Um, I'll start off, um, on this first slide here. So as Karen said, we tried to take a hundred-page report and condense it down into about seven or eight pages with, with doing meetings on Zoom these days. Um, you know, hopefully that's, um, make it a little bit easier to follow and, uh, just try to hit some of the high points. But, you know, if there's anything comes up during the presentation, you have questions on, just feel free to let us know. The audit had an uncl- or an unmodified, uh, opinion, or we, as we call it, a clean opinion. That's pretty standard. That's what you've gotten in the past. Um, it's also subject to, um, government auditing, uh, standards, which is for city governments. And then, um, Uniform Guidance, or what we call Single Audit. Um, and this is all over the grant, uh, programs that was required this year, and the threshold for that is $750,000 of, um, federal, uh, federal funding. Requires an extra set of, uh, compliance, um, requirements that we have to go through, um, with, with the city. And then, um, I'm, I'm proud to report, uh, and, and, uh, I'll second what Rachel said earlier. Uh, there were no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies. Just really a credit to the, um, to the team here and the internal controls that, that the city has in place. Um, I'm ready for the, yes, please. Thank you. Um. The report, status of the audit, the report has been issued. Um, it's been filed with the Tennessee Comptroller's Office. It's also been filed with the Federal Audit Clearing House. It's been, and it's been, um, presented to the management and the board, and of course, it is, uh, public record. Next slide, please. And so the next slide here is a statement of net position. And if, um, in the, uh, if you're looking at the report, um, it's on page five is where I took this snapshot. And, um, I know those numbers are a little bit hard to see, but, um, um, the important numbers that I wanted to just kind of briefly go over is at the, that very last row down at the bottom, where it talks about is this total net position, and that's the net of assets and liabilities. And so, um, the city is really strong in this area, um, from a, you know, the governmental activities is the general fund and all the other, um, uh, governmental funds, and then the business-type activities is the, um, utility funds. So, in the governmental activities, you had $134 million of net position at the end of the year. Twenty-four million of that is unrestricted, and that's really good as well because those, um, with these times with, you know, it, with cities having pensions and dealing with anything in the economy, um, having a positive unrestricted number is, is a huge plus for the City of Gallatin. We actually see some cities where that number can, um, can be negative. So, um, really strong performance there. And then the primary, or I'm sorry, in the business-type activities, um, which is the utility funds, um, about just shy of $190 million, forty-seven, that forty-seven million of that is, um, unrestricted. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. And then, um, the next, th- this slide here is the, uh, fund balance, and that's the number that you're probably most familiar with because that's what you follow throughout the year with your budgeting and everything. Uh, the general fund had about an eight, uh, finished up with about, um, and that's, this is actually the second to the last line, and it is actually on page, uh, twelve, I believe, if you were following in the report. And this is, uh, the general fund was just shy of, it ended up at June 30 of 2020. About nineteen, just shy of $19 million of fund balance. The Capital Projects Fund ended with about five million. Those are two, the two, what we call major funds. All the other governmental funds roll up into the next column, which is about two million. So ending fund balance for the city is about just shy of $26 million. Again, there's, um, strong, um, you know, s- strong performance, and really, really, these are more of a reflection of the long-term, um, avenues that the city has pr- is done in the past. Um, next slide, please. And on this slide here is the, uh, utility funds. I've shown them all three here at the top. And then down here, down at the bottom, again, that shows the, uh, net position um, for each of the three utilities, which rolls up into $190 million. Of, uh, we call it net position. Um, not on the slide, but important to note is, um, and actually, this slide is actually an excerpt of page seventeen of the audit report. On page eighteen is the income statement. One thing I want to, um, highlight about all three utilities is, is that the operating income for all three utilities was $8 million, um, for the year ending June 30, 2020. Each of the three utilities, um, had over $2 million of operating income, and that's really strong because in the utility world, if that operating income gets down or close to a negative number, you could be, uh, potentially labeled as a financially distressed, um, utility. And, you know, with each of the three utilities at $2 million, you're far from that. So, um, again, just, um, just a really strong, uh, financial performance for the year. Uh, next slide, please. And so, um, just a few highlights from the rest of the report, just if you need more information. Um, I know I switched back and forth between fund balance and net position, and you're, um, used to seeing the fund balance. The net position actually adds the fixed assets and your long-term debt to your balance sheet. If you ever need to see a reconciliation of those two, it's on pages thirteen and fifteen in the report, and it lays out a pretty detailed, um, reconciliation if you were ever to get a question about that. Uh, general fund comparison, budget comparisons start on page twenty-one, and the other funds start on page sixty-six. We didn't see any issues there in the report. Page thirty-one starts with the footnotes, and it basically covers fixed asset, debt, and retirement plans and some other, um, miscellaneous areas as well. Um, the statistical data, which is actually prepared by Rachel and her team, um, starts on page eighty-one. And that's if you wanted to go back and take a ten-year look back at City of Gallatin, uh, they've got a lot of great schedules back there. Um, for instance, I believe on page eighty-eight, they've got a property tax that shows the property taxes for the last uh, ten years, and you can see, um, looking at that schedule and other schedules, um, in this section, you can see the growth that, uh, Gallatin has, um, um, has incurred in the last ten years. And then, um, as I stated, um, at the beginning, there were no, uh, findings, um, in the audit report. If there were, they would start on page ninety-seven. Uh, page ninety-seven just, uh, just provides our internal control reporting, basically noting that there were no findings. And then that's everything I had. Was there, um, any questions or anybody want to add anything, um, to the presentation?
I was just going to ask one question. I, I notice you didn't say anything about the rainy day fund. Uh, do you think that's, uh, uh, in good position, or how do you feel about that?
Yeah, the rainy day fund is part of your, uh, unrestricted fund balance is very appropriate. It's one of the things that the city has done in the past, um, to make sure that it, it remains, uh, very stable for the future. And so we didn't see any issues with that fund. As well, you've got another, um, Bob did not mention it, but, uh, stabilization fund related to your pension built into your, um, fund balance, net, uh, net position as well. And so those are both two, um, fiscally responsible types of reserves, um, that a financially healthy city like yourself um, would, would participate in. So again, uh, we believe that the city's net position, uh, and their, as Bob mentioned, over the course of time and as it sta- stands at the period we audited, uh, are both very responsible and, and healthy. So, even, even, and keep in mind, this is for the year ended June 30 of 2020, which reflects the pandemic, uh, from, you know, mid-March through the end of June. So you're already seeing in these financial statements the actions that you all took to, um, amend the budget, to reduce expenditures, uh, and to pause or to delay projects. All of that took effect in these financial statements we're seeing, and you still, um, you, you know, you still were proactive and had strong net position.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
It's all great news.
It's all really good news. Yes, auditors are always hesitant to say great, but it's, it's really good news.
Would y'all have any statistics on how we rate? Was there ninety-five counties in the state from like one to ninety-five? Is there any statistics that do how, how we rate from one to ninety-five?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow Zoom, and I'm not exactly sure who to look at that asked that question. But, uh, we actually talked with the mayor, uh, and, and Rachel about statistics kind of all throughout the audit, um, and benchmarking is one of the things we know you guys are interested in. And so we are, uh, working sort of behind the scenes to put together some key benchmarks to be able to share with management. Um, of course, we don't benchmark municipalities against counties, uh, because those two operations aren't really very similar. Um, but what we hope to do is to be able to benchmark the city, um, along with other cities that might have similar operations uh, and be able to provide some information there about utilities, for example, or about, um, capital improvements or, or some of the various key performance indicators. So that's something that we know you guys are interested in. It's not part of the core audit that we do, um, but we, we've certainly seen some things and have some observations that we're planning to share. So, um, I, I'm sure that as we talk with Rachel and, and with the mayor in the future, anything, um, that could be of help to this group would be shared with them. So, Rachel, I don't know if you want to comment on that at all, or, or mayor?
Thank you.
Rachel, anything? Nothing to add. Thank you.
I just want to say that, you know, thank you to the Blankenship CPA Group, um, you guys for really, I mean, I get, all the feedback I've gotten is that you've been fabulous to work with this year. It's always, um, a bit nerve-wracking, I think, when there are new auditors, but, but that's why I really want to emphasize, um, a huge thanks, appreciation, and a lot of admiration for our finance department because I think having new auditors really probably reinforces, um, certainly the finance director's, um, confidence, and I hope all of yours as well, that our department is running things well, is, um, very careful as they proceed, and for all the pressure that she and I both constantly put on staying within budget and being conservative, that these are the times that it pays off because we are on a positive trajectory, and, um, it's all of us working to do that. So, my thanks especially to our finance department and Rachel.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Thank you all for the compliments. Thank you, mayor. We appreciate it. We're excited to work with you guys. Um, and i- if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask them. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen and Bob.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the second item on the agenda. It's ordinance number zero-two, one zero one dash two, Ms. Nichols.
This is an ordinance to appropriate the funds that we received from the debt issue that we just completed, the bond sale that we had first part of January. Um, we ended up receiving eleven million, one hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents in the sale of that one hundred and eleven thousand and some change will cover all the closing costs related to this. And that leaves the remaining balance to be appropriated amongst these projects. Um, these are projects that were brought to you back in October, I believe, is when the meeting dates occurred, September and October. Um, council voted for the eleven million dollar, um, issue. And so, um, at the meeting, the mayor had a spreadsheet of the projects and how we would trim down the initial request to the eleven million, and these were the numbers that were agreed upon at that time. We did end up with a s- uh, a surplus. The bond sold for a premium. So we ended up with an extra one thousand, one forty-three, forty-one. And I just plugged that thousand dollars into the road allocation because that seems to be our greatest demand right now. If y'all would like me to move that to some other line, I'll be glad to, but, um, it was a little extra eleven, um, thousand dollars. So, um, that's where we plugged that, and these are the projects that were listed. Last week, you gave us permission to move ahead on the golf irrigation system. Um, that's the only one that's actually up and running right now, or moving forward right now. Um, these others, once we get the funding in place, I'm sure the projects will start moving forward.
Motion to, no, I'm sorry.
I was just going to mention, um, when this presentation was made, we noted that we would be reimbursing the general fund two billion dollars for the land purchases we made in 2019. And, um, two million dollars, we wanted to use seven hundred thousand for the new police and fire training facility out in the industrial park. So that's included in this ordinance as well, just denoting that seven hundred thousand so that that project can move forward as well.
Oh, this is, I want to do a motion to send it all?
Yeah, motion to send it all.
Second.
Kettrell, you just take the roll call vote, please.
I will. Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Move on to agenda item number three, approval or deny accepting sale of property. Ms. Kettrell.
Uh, occasionally, we will have a piece of property, uh, that has gone off of our tax rolls and is held at the county under a delinquent tax committee. Someone has requested to purchase, uh, some, it's a vacant lot on Oleander Drive, and, uh, the county has once, would like to s- accept the bid of three thousand, five hundred dollars. We can only go back ten years to collect back taxes, so we can only go back to 2010, and that would not cover the taxes that they owe for those years, but it would get them back on the tax roll. I just need your decision kind of a direction, what you would like to do with this.
Is that a buildable lot, or does it show any, a lot of reckon? Is it showing on that lot anything?
It looks like it is.
It's a vacant lot right now, so I'm not sure what they intend to do with it, but you have all the information that I have.
Yeah, you got, if you got the map there, it looks like it is. Uh, I'll make a motion if we do. Go ahead.
Second. Ms. Kettrell.
Okay. Um, Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Moving on to the, uh, agenda number four, ordinance number zero-two-one zero-two dash four, Mr. Stewart.
Uh, good evening, councilman mayor. Uh, this ordinance is, uh, in, uh, a follow-up to, uh, Mr. McCord's ordinance on the, uh, new fencing, uh, rules for the city here. This would align us with the, uh, 2018 building code and his ordinance, which would, uh, move our, uh, permitting requirements to fences and walls that are seven feet or, or higher in height.
Motion to send it all.
Second.
Good for him.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda number five. It's ordinance number zero-two-one zero-two dash three, Mr. Stewart again.
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance is, uh, similar to the ordinance that, uh, the engineering department found earlier in the year. It's, uh, withdraw funds from the, uh, Wolfhawk account. This ordinance would, uh, or these funds would, uh, support the salaries and all the, uh, uh, benefits for two, uh, additional inspectors between now and, uh, the end of June. Also give us the ability to pick up the office supplies, office equipment, and a couple of, uh, vehicles.
Most approved.
Second.
Kettrell.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Okay, we'll move on to other business. Does anyone have any other business they'd like to talk about?
I have a few things. If you want me to go ahead, or do you want the council to go ahead?
Looks like you're up, mayor.
All right. The first is, is we've had a request from, um, a resident of the City of Gallatin to, um, basically, see if the city would be willing to sell the land that is part of the parcel on which Fire Station Number Four sits on Station Camp. He is interested in putting an office on that piece of property. So Ms. High McCully has researched the issue. There are several, several things that we would have to do to be able to sell it, um, including buy the parcel. We also have to advertise to sell that, and, um, and then, you know, whatever the, the, I guess, the highest bidder on that property could obtain that piece of property. I actually drove out there today and looked at it. I, 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 right now, I'm not feeling like it really feels right to have just an office kind of sitting there next to the fire hall alone. But we want to get some feedback from this council on how you guys might feel about this, um, before the city attorney's office endeavors to do the work, to, to go through the steps to sell this.
Mayor, is that, is that the property on Station Camp?
Yes.
I wouldn't be wanting to do that. I mean, we had a guy give us that property, and he didn't give it to us to sell or do anything else with it. He gave us that property for fire station, and I'd be opposed to it because he gave us that, and when he called me to give us that property, I mean, he gave it to us for fire hall, not to sell and make money. I'd, I'd rather keep it to have.
All right, go ahead, Sean.
I, I'd rather keep it to, uh, have options to do something further down the road. Who knows what we'll need it for?
We might want to add an ambulance bay or something at some point.
That's kind of where I, I was kind of leaning toward, and we might want to hold on to it in case we do want it, uh, do some expansion on down the road. That's kind of where I was kind of leaning toward and we might want to hold on to it in case we do want to do some expansion on down the road while we have the property.
Yep.
How much property is it?
That's on station count.
How much is it? Is it acre, high pike, or quarter acre?
I don't know how much we could pull out of it. He's looking for... It's less than an acre. But, um, but I appreciate Councilman Overton's perspective because, of course, that's something that I wouldn't have recalled. But I feel like, Ms. High McCully, I don't know if you want to vote on this or not, but I feel like we kind of have a general perspective of the council at this point to guide us. If there's any... May I ask if there's anyone who feels like we should? Do you want to speak up and say that? That work, Ms. High McCully? Is that enough feedback? That work? Thank you.
You're paying for the word, Mayor, then I'm making any more line.
That's exactly right. Okay, the second thing I have is a property in downtown Gallatin. This is owned by a downtown business owner. There is a parking lot. I don't know if you're familiar with the in-low building, but if you turn and go down the, I guess, the right-hand side of the, of the police department. Is that right? Yeah, police department. The in-low building sits on your right and has a parking lot behind it. Well, the property owner actually approached him about it because he was asking me some questions about the property. But we basically discussed and he is willing, if this council is willing, to lease that parking lot to the city. And essentially, although we have terms to work through and everything, but the idea is that he would essentially lease us to, lease it to us for maybe a buck a year, a long-term lease. And we would maintain, we would pave the lot and maintain that lot as long as we used it as public parking. He does have a building. He feels like they will probably use six to seven spaces, but they'll be coming and going type spaces, which would leave us an additional close to twenty. I think there's maybe twenty-five spaces that engineering thinks we can get in that lot. I was interested because I feel like as this courthouse construction begins, that we may be really pressed to find parking for the public and for our city employees as we want to free up as much lot, parking in our lot as we possibly can. So I wanted to bring that idea to you again. Not asking you to vote on it officially at this point, but I want your guidance because Ms. High McCully and her office is going to move forward withdrawing up terms. If you are favorable towards this, and if you're not, then we're going to let it die.
Do we have a... Sorry. Do we have an idea what it's going to cost to pave?
I think it's fifty-two thousand dollars. Does that sound right, Zach? Mr. Wilkinson?
Yes, that's correct. It's a little more than just paving it. We got a great issues, but to get it where it can be used as a public parking, fifty-two thousand dollars.
I mean, is that worth fifty-two thousand dollars just for use for a year or two or three? I mean...
I think we'll be using it long-term potentially. I mean, as downtown grows and evolves, I think, I think it's pretty cheap surface parking compared to what you would be paying if, you know, you were building or buying something.
You sell approximately twenty, twenty spaces? That's twenty-six hundred dollars per space.
And he's, and he's going to be using some too, don't forget. So, you know, it's not all, we're not using all twenty spaces.
Well, no, no. I, I think the total number was in the twenty-five range and he felt like his building would have six to seven tenants that would be coming and going, so it would be close.
I would, I would like to look at it before we do anything. If you don't mind, let's table it till the next committee meeting or something. Let us go down there and look at it.
Mayor, just one question. Did you, did you show any interest in maybe selling it?
Well, I think that, you know, we discussed that. I'm not saying he absolutely would not. But I think as we talked over a lease, that that was probably more appealing because the long-term value of the building, I, I really think he's kind of open. But I, I think the lease was the thing that kind of felt better to both of us at the time that we discussed it. Again, just to clarify, this is not you guys. I'm not asking you guys to, to say, yes, we're going to do this at this point. What I'm asking you for is should Ms. High McCully proceed onward with drafting a contract with terms that we could then have you vote on? I'm not sure where it is.
Yeah, Mayor, would you say again? You said the pass in the police department, it's on the right.
On the right.
It's all right. Go past the police department and the lot is all right.
Kind of like behind, behind Chubbs.
I know what you're talking about. Okay.
The one that's kind of behind Dairy Berry's?
Uh, it's not that far down, no.
So, and not behind Star Ranch?
Not that far down, no.
Just the one that Randy owns, Mayor?
Not any longer.
But that's the one he used to own?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good parking lot. That's right there, right there behind the palace and stuff. It's a good parking lot.
I'd be curious to know if he'd be interested in selling it and what kind of price he would have in mind.
And if it's on a lease, how many years would he do?
Yeah, can you find... Why don't you find out some more information? Let's bring it up again in the next committee meeting before we get Susan to take time to do this.
Well...
Look at, I don't know where it's at. I'd like to go look at it myself.
Okay, well, it's, um, you know, you can look on Ariel and certainly see it right now if you want.
Well, not right now, but...
We were thinking in terms of ten years to time and he was willing to write in there terms where if he were to, if either of us were in the lease, that they would reimburse the city for prorate of, of our investment, that kind of thing. So he, he's somewhat open to the terms and I think, you know, I can see us being open as well. But we've not gone forward with drafting any for consideration.
Mayor, one other, one other suggestion while we're talking about that, on the other side of the police department, you know, those three houses that's there. I saw last week where one of them's on the market for sale. We've always talked about us purchasing those houses if they ever went on the market to sell. And I understand the one right beside the farmer's market just went on the market for sale.
Ooh, I'm going to look that up right now. Thank you. I, I drive by it every day and I haven't noticed, so thank you.
I think, um, I forgot what his name has got it listed, but I think it just went on the market yesterday or so.
You're talking about the logger's offices?
The one right beside the farmer's market, yes.
Okay.
Used to be the office, it used to be the office building, I think, where they used to be.
Jim Hunter used to have his office there?
No, it's back up beside the farmer's market. Jim Hunter's was on the very end, but it's the same side of the street in the same row of buildings. Jim was just on the very end. This is the one beside of the farmer's market. I think Justin Tucker had it, had it advertised as, just put it on the market.
Is it in the flood plain?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
Setting up that high on the hill, I wouldn't think so. But I know we've talked about, we've, we've talked about being able to go across the bridge. We've talked about all kinds of stuff to do with those properties if they ever went up for sale. And I just saw it on the market, so I just wanted to mention that, so maybe the mayor could look into it for us.
Is that, is that this office property?
His old building there, yeah.
Okay.
His price just went up.
I just, we're not having any option in it. I just need somebody to look at it.
His price just went up.
So, we're, we're talking about those buildings that are close to it though, there's...
Not necessarily Mr. Hayes because we're only interested if the price is right, right?
Yeah.
It's not listed in where I'm looking on Zillow yet, but...
We'll look at that later.
See the sign tonight.
Good.
Thank you for that. Um, okay, so where are we with this? Do you guys want to wait and make a determination on how to direct us at the next meeting? We do it under other businesses?
Yeah, I think we need a little more, um, work session.
We do at the next council meeting?
Next work session. Work session, please.
Whatever. Um, and then I'll say when the council's know that Connie Flood and I are working on an employee satisfaction survey to send out to Gallatin City employees. I am going to send kind of the questions that we have collectively drafted to this council and also to our department heads to see if they have any suggestions or any concerns with any of the questions that we're considering for that survey. And then I think that is all that I have. I know that Mr. Stewart has a council report that he'd like to share.
Okay. I've, I've got something too later. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I had a question for Mr. McCoy. Is he on here?
For whom?
Mr. McCoy.
No, he's not here this evening. Josh King is here in his place.
Councilman Alexander, I'm happy to hear the discussion and answer or provide you an answer back when I can research it, but I'm all ears.
Okay, I know last year I asked him to look into like a community grant that we had some years ago where we done some work on people's houses in the community. Have you all done anything in, in that direction that you know of?
It's called the Community Development Black Grant Home, Home Funds. We, the city has not reapplied. We're still very painfully, slowly going through the close-out procedures with the state. There are, we are encouraging folks to reach out to the Gallatin Sumner County Habitat for Humanity for emergency repairs. And we are building our nonprofit sector up to be able to tackle these grants in coordination with GNRC.
So, let me, we're looking into one or we're not?
We are looking into closing out the one that we have from about eight years ago. And we are, when that's closed out, the state will determine our eligibility for a future grant.
Well, and, and, and you may or may not recall, Councilman Alexander, but with the last round that we had, last round that we had, there were some issues because we actually had some grants awarded that then were deemed, I guess, should, I'm looking at you, Josh, that, that later they came back and said, oh, we shouldn't approve those. We're going to have to pay them back. It was, it was quite difficult to navigate and it was nothing the city did wrong, but it was more on the side of the administrators and, but it, but it became quite the difficult situation to step through. And that's why we're like, I'm guessing, looking at Josh, that we're having difficulty kind of closing those files.
That's exactly right, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Got any other more, any other business?
Yeah, that's for Mr. Fann. This is Chuck Beneficial. I included in your package tonight the semi-annual report from the building department. As you can see, we've been extremely busy and the, on, on the page two there, if you notice that the, on the valuation, that the valuations for the first six months of this year was one point two billion into, into Gallatin. I think that's a pretty significant number to, to, to show what our growth has been. I would be able to answer any questions you might have after this report. I would recommend if you want to go in depth on it, you give me a call in my office tomorrow.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Fann. This is Fire Chief Williams. We do have a couple of things that we want to bring before the council tonight. I'm going to allow Chief Woodward to talk about a grant that we're interested in and pursuing, and we would need your approval to submit for that grant. And I'm also going to talk about a safer grant that we're interested in pursuing as well. So I'm going to allow Chief Woodward to talk about the assistance to firefighters grant first.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. How are y'all?
Hi.
So the reason I'm here tonight, I'm requesting this council's consideration for the Gallatin Fire Department to move forward in applying for the AFG grant to obtain some turnout gear for the department. We've been in a program, I know in two thousand nineteen, we purchased twenty-nine new sets of gear and fifty-one pairs of turnout boots. But going through the last few months and inventorying our items, out of our eighty-eight frontline suppression employees, thirty-one currently require replacement of their primary set of turnout gear. This is due to just normal wear and tear. And we actually had about six sets burned in a patient removal two weeks ago, so I'd like to get those repaired. Also, out of those eighty-eight that are directly involved with suppression activities, eighty-four of those people do not have or have expired secondary gear. The way the secondary gear comes in, if, if we have a structured fire or a call that exposes our people to some kind of fluid that gets on their gear, they're supposed to have a secondary set to get into while their first set is getting cleaned. I have gotten some pricing from three different manufacturers and that pricing is within five to six percent of each other. And using the highest price, which this would include replacing helmets, gloves, the addition of particulate hoods, which will help with our cancer initiative. Pants and jackets would be approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. When applying for that AFG grant, the city's responsibility would be ten percent of the total cost. That would be thirty-six thousand dollars. So I'm asking for the council to consider this.
How many people would that replace the gear for?
That would give our entire department, top to bottom.
And a lot of those people don't even have the secondary gear at all?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Eighty-four of our eighty-eight who are in suppression either do not have it at all or what they do have is expired. I've got some in some two thousand nine year. And we follow the NFPA, the eighteen fifty-one, which is the standard for turnout gear. Their requirement is ten years from the manufacturer date. They suggest it's retired.
So the city would only be responsible for about thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, if, if, if the highest-priced manufacturer won the bid, it would be three hundred and sixty thousand, which would make the city's responsibility for that thirty-six thousand dollars.
I assume you know if you can get the grant or not.
Uh, I'm, Mr. Overton, I'm not sure on the turnaround time. I know the deadline to apply is February the twelfth, but I can get that information for you and get that to you.
I, I feel that on a ninety, ten grand, I mean, Lord have mercy, you'd almost have to do. Yeah, we need to add.
Yeah, ten percent of ninety.
Yeah, I, I think we need to apply for it. That's just my opinion.
I'll second that.
If y'all...
I'm just trying to ask a question.
I do want to weigh in here because I want this council to have a full picture. I'm actually meeting with Chief Woodward tomorrow and we're going to talk about this further. But ever since I've been here, you know, the, the dire need for turnout gear has been a subject in every budget year. And in the last, since the year since I've been here, since two thousand fifteen, we budgeted three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for turnout gear. So I'm not understanding why we are in such dire straits still. And honestly, until he contacted me about this grant, there'd never been any discussion about secondary gear. So I'm going to have to learn some more of that. But I am supportive of us applying for this grant because I do think it's a good opportunity. But we've spent a lot of money, what, bringing, bringing us where I thought was into a good position. And I've, I'm very confused as to why we're not in a good...
Well, this has to, this has to go to city council, right?
No, the, the, this is...
I mean, if he gets, if he gets the grant, do we have to do it? In other words, I mean...
I guess you don't, but I don't think it would be...
I guess...
If we were awarded a grant and did not.
We're, we're talking about the grant for the gear. We're not talking about the safer grant because we got a safer grant just not too long ago, which involved employees.
Right.
Where, yeah, the grant was paying for the employee's salary up to a certain amount of time. Then we had to pick up and take on responsibility of, of that on our budget. So this is two separate things, right?
Yes, yes, yes. It's the AFG grant and it's for equipment and it... Um, Chief...
I guess my question is, Mayor, would you rather us wait until you meet with him and then discuss it next week or something or what?
We don't have the time to do that. I don't believe. Well, I mean, I guess we could, but on next week, but your deadline to apply is the twelfth.
Yes, ma'am. I have it in by the twelfth, but we can go ahead and have everything ready to submit if you wanted me to meet with people or get that information out to the council. I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I, I sense that this council is going to be supportive, but I do think that we all need a real clear picture of exactly the status and why this change in status is a, has happened for our department. But we'll talk tomorrow more about that and then we can bring it up next week for this council to go ahead and vote on, you know, whether or not to apply for it, but I feel like it will be a positive.
I have a question too. Are we recommending the highest bid we have and for what reason would we do that?
We, that was budgeting purposes. We can't. It would have to be... We, that was budgeting purposes. We can't, it would have to be bid, right?
Yeah, Councilman Fan, I was just given, of the three manufacturers that I spoke with, 360 was the highest cost that I had. So worst-case scenario, the city would be on the hook for $36,000.
Okay, you're giving the worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And you guys are meeting tomorrow.
I, I, I don't know if we've set a time or not, but I, I, I think I said I was available tomorrow and ask Angela to get something scheduled.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for bringing it to us, Scott. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Yeah, thank y'all for hearing me.
Got anybody else that wants to speak on other business?
Yes, sir, I have one other grant I wanted, I'm sorry, someone else is speaking.
I was going to say, I thought you had another thing that you mentioned.
Yes, ma'am, I did. I have one other grant I wanted to discuss with you this evening. And of course, that is the safer grant that's going to be opening on Monday, February 8th, and it closes also the 12th of March. We're asking that you consider allowing us to apply for that as well. We've been in negotiation with EMS and EMA about a temporary fire station out at the EMS headquarters. And this would allow us to provide the staffing for it. The good news in this cycle is that the safer grant has actually waived pretty much all of their restrictions for this year. And basically what that means is that the federal government is going to take on the full share of the cost of the grant. So the city will have no share in what, what the cost is going to be. We have done some preliminary numbers to get in the ballpark and we believe that that safer grant will be valued at about 2.75 million to hire the people to go ahead and start servicing the east side of the city. So before we could apply, we wanted to bring that to the council to get your feedback, to see if you were supportive of that. And so that's why I brought it to you here tonight for your consideration. Chief, have you met with the mayor and discussed this with the mayor? We've had some discussion, yes. Cool.
Okay, I'll weigh in. I, I have real concerns about us being prepared to absorb this cost within three years when we're just now starting to absorb the cost of the last round of hires. We also are not certain. Information that he's sharing is from a consultant. The final details of the 2020 safer grant are not supposed to be relate, released until the 8th. And so we don't have absolute affirmation of what that looks like and what expenses they will be covering. Certainly, it's not going to cover an apparatus. I talked to the chief about potentially, because EMS is open to sharing space with us. And we had some concerns about getting coverage out there based on a, a development that was under consideration that has not, that has not been approved at this point. But that opportunity does exist. When I had talked to EMS about it, I said, I was looking a couple of years down the road for us to put some, a crew there temporarily. And Chief Williams wanted to do it more immediately. I asked about putting potentially our engine there and keeping the ladder truck here in town. He didn't seem to think that was a viable option, but I do think that, you know, when we start looking at our long-term planning and we're only spacing out another crew of firefighters three years apart, that, that's a lot for the city. When you look at our revenue growth and the costs to employ all of our employees on a year-to-year basis, that's really laying some groundwork for a, a need for an increase in revenue. And you know what that means, so.
Chief, I would just ask you, and, and I think all of us have always supported the fire department, but I would just ask you to get with the mayor and let her make the recommendation as well and see what y'all can get work out on both of these and hopefully I'll bring it back to you. Sounds like you got till sometime in the middle of March before you have to apply for this safer grant. So if you'll get with her, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
And February 8th is supposed to be the date for the rollout of the official detail, when FEMA released the final details according to our grant coordinator. And I didn't want this brought up until we knew those for certain.
Well, the, the consultant that we referred to, he's been spot-on every time. And this is the same process that the safer grant did last year as well. It was 100% on the cost share for the federal government doing last year safer. And they rolled that over again this year. That's why I brought it because I feel pretty confident that the consultant is spot-on. And it's really a redo of what we did last year in safer. So again, I just brought it for your consideration to try to address an issue that we know we have for coverage out in the east side of the city. Just want you to be informed. Thank you, Chief.
Hey, I appreciate you, Chief. You're getting ahead of the game. I, I, I thank you so much for, for that. So appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more other business?
I will, hey, Nick, did we have a lot of flood last night? Do we have a lot of, do we have any problems last night that, other than what I sent you an email on?
We've had a couple of calls today, but it, it really hasn't been too bad from, from what I can tell. I went out on something today and, and also I know Lance has taken a few calls. So it, I, it, it actually wasn't as bad of a rain event as it may have seemed, I guess. I think with it warming up and kind of letting the ground get a little bit warmer and thawed out, we haven't had a lot of rain in January. So the ground was able to absorb a lot.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And let me encourage all the other council members also, if you hadn't taken your COVID shot, please consider it.
You may throw out here information on the Franklin Street property. One of our very gracious viewers found and sent to me the link for this property. It's 414-9170 West Franklin Street. They're asking for $14,973 per square foot.
I knew it went on the market. I wasn't sure for what, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Because it's been on the market eight days and you're right in that it's listed by Justin Tucker.
Thank you.
Okay, any more other business? Then we'll move on to the department head reports if we have any. Would anybody like to speak on that? Okay, with that said, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Most adjourn.
Second.
Third. Hi, guys. I'll be safe. See you seeing y'all.
Bye. I know.